Good evening, everyone. My name is Brad Gottschall. I am the Lower Paxton Township Manager. And in typical fashion, I'm going to give a brief summary of this evening's agenda, particularly for the benefit of those who may be watching at home on television. So this evening is a regular business session of the Board of Supervisors. And we have a number of action items on the agenda to include beginning first under old business, the board will take action to adopt Resolution 2023-33, which relates to the annual township municipal budget and its rate of taxation. After this, the board under new business will take action to adopt Resolution 2023-32, which relates to the annual budget process, this time, however, with regard to amending the fee schedule for the township. Following that, the board will take action to accept application for payment number seven with regard to the Township Municipal Center's Lobby Improvement Project, following approval of action on application for payment number three, which relates to the Forest Hills Parks Improvement Project. After that, application for payment number four, which relates to the 2023 Township Paving Project. Following finally, action on application for payment number four for the Brightville Park Playground Improvement. Lot of, lot of bills being paid tonight. Following finally, the board will take action on a number of improvement guarantees, the payment of township and authority bills, and then finally, any last announcements before finally making a motion to adjourn. With all that said, members of the board are seated and prepared to conduct business. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Gottschall. This meeting of the Lower Paxton Township Board of Supervisors will come to order. Like to ask everyone to please rise, and Supervisor Lindsey will lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We will now move to approval of minutes of the October 17th, 2023 Budget Workshop and the October 17th, 2023 Business Meeting. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. The Board of Supervisors did meet in executive session prior to this meeting and will do so following. Now is the time set aside for public comment. If there are members of the public who are here to speak to an item that's on the agenda, you may speak to that at that time. If you were here to speak to an item not on the agenda, this would be the time for that. So would anybody like to speak on an item not on the agenda this evening? Yes, sir. Please come to the podium and give us your name and address, sir.
And if I'm loud, let me know, because I'm hard of hearing. I don't hear myself talk, so if I'm loud, please say so. The reason I'm here is because, first of all, I have cancer. And I was also in the hospital for two months, two years ago, with COVID. I had, with my, because of my cancer treatments, my immune system was very low. So I was in the hospital with COVID. I had sapsis, I had pneumonia, and my right lung was completely collapsed, and I was breathing out of a quarter of my left lung. Four doctors were telling my family I was not going to live. I'm not going to survive that. Thank God I'm here. I had a lot of people praying for me. And the thing is with that, is I have my good days, I have my bad days.
Me too.
And, you know, a lot of times I park in handicap parking lots. If my wife, I have a placard, or if my wife's driving me, then she'll drop me off and then she'll go park, so we won't have to take the handicap parking spot. But I'm just going to use what happened, what I saw last night as an example, in this kind of, I'm going to say dank machine, so to speak. My wife and I were parked over at the Dollar General. That, when you come out of a hardware store, you turn right, stay at the Dollar General, they're on the left across from the bar, there's a subway there. So we were parked in that parking lot. My wife parked one spot over from the handicap spot, and she went in. I sat in the car. Shortly after we came in, another car pulled into the handicap spot, guy runs into the store. Now, I understand you can't judge somebody for their health by how they look. Look at me, you might not find there's anything wrong. It's more breathing for me. So shortly after he went in the store, somebody drove by in an older SUV, a little SUV. Guy came around, drove in front of us, come back around, and parked about three spaces up from us, which is the first space available there. Got out of his car, got a walker out, walking with his walker. My wife came out, the guy in the car beside us came out. There was no handicap parking placard on his mirror. So as we backed out, there was no handicap license plate, or we have disabled veterans. My dad had a Purple Heart. Purple Heart qualifies you for that. Disabled veterans qualify you for that. He had nothing. I thought, you know, that's just wrong, you know? I was really tempted to just get out of my car, take a picture of the car with the license plate and the handicap sign. But I understand, to me, it's a moot point. I've asked police officers about it already, and they say, well, we just don't have the manpower to enforce stuff like that. Well, I was looking last night on Google, and, I mean, Google knows all, so, but it is a state law. We have two state lawmakers here. It is state law that, you know, if you get, if you park in that and you're not authorized to park in that, you can get fined. So, okay, if people get caught doing that, if there's something the public, the private citizens can do, if the police department don't have the manpower to do it, or something has got to be done about this, because I see it when I go over to giants, when I go to cons, being disabled, I see it a lot. And somehow, something has to get done. If it's manpower and cost, why not pay? You know, to fight fire with fire. If you park in a parking spot and you're not supposed to be there, you get a fine. If you get caught again, the fine's doubled. You get caught again, the fine's tripled. That'll stop it in a hurry. So I'm just, you know, I respect the guys and what you do, and I appreciate everything you do. I love this township, grew up, born and raised in Middletown, and, but it's just, when I see people parking in handicap parking spots, and I see people like that that can't hardly walk, something's got to be done. And, you know, what can be done? Is there something I can do? They have private, they have citizen police academies for citizens to help watch the neighborhood and stuff like that. What about private citizens? Maybe the police department can put one page on their website that's kind of a hidden site. I could post a picture of a car parked there, no handicap plate, no handicap tags. Police department looks at the tag and says, ah, if that person doesn't have a plate or a tag, offer ticket fees. So, you know, there's something I wanted to share with you tonight, because I've talked to, you know, her, and she recommended I come to the meeting, and, but a lot of times when I talk to the police department, they just say, well, we just don't have the manpower to do this. So, okay, if the police department don't, why not allow private citizens to do things to a certain extent? Now, that's just my thing, but it really touched my heart, especially when I saw that last night.
Could you give us your name and address for the record, please? Could you give us your name and address, please?
She has it.
Oh, you already gave it to her? Okay, good. Okay, well, you raise a valid point, and our Public Safety Director just happens to be in the room, so he's heard it, so, well, we'll see what we can do. Anybody else like to address the board on an item not on the agenda this evening? Okay. That being the case, we'll now have Chairman and Board Member comments. And I have rarely done comments under Chairman's comments, so I have about six years' worth of Chairman's comments bought, you know, in the bank, so I calculated that to be about four and a half hours, so I'm going to keep my...
Then I'm going first.
Then...
I'm going home.
Yeah. Now, this, this being my last board meeting, I did want to reflect back on everything that's happened over the last six years, some things that were anticipated. I know six years ago, whenever I ran for this, having been on the board previously for a couple of years, my wife said, well, I don't want to hear any complaining from you, because you know what you're getting into. Well, a global pandemic was not something that I was thinking we were going to get into. And I have to say that as we went through the last six years, getting through the COVID pandemic in the manner in which this township did, really speaks to the, first of all, the professionalism of our, our management, but also the dedication of our staff. Because as we went through COVID, we didn't close. Now, maybe there was, you know, that first couple of weeks, like everybody else, we really weren't quite sure what was going to happen. But after that, our employees were like, no, we want to go to work. And they did. And throughout the whole COVID pandemic, our employees showed up. Yeah, we didn't allow the public in the building, we had to do some things remotely. But our staff all showed up and continued to do the job that they were hired to do. And the board, at the time, you, I'm sure my fellow supervisors will remember this, we weren't quite sure what was going to happen financially, because finances went downhill real rapidly in March, April, and May. We actually went in and cut a million dollars or so out of the budget that year. Fortunately, we had a rebound almost as fast, if not faster, than the downturn, and our finances stabilized. We also have benefited from being the recipient of millions of dollars in federal stimulus money. And that money, this board has put to very good use on a whole wide range of capital projects. We wanted to make sure it was one-time money, that we didn't use it, and then when it was gone, there would have to be a tax hike. So I think the board has been more than prudent with that grant money. It is showing up in a number of places in the township. As far as our, our finances are concerned, I'm very pleased that in the last six years, we have not had a general fund tax hike in the six years. And actually, Robin, it goes back many years before that.
2016.
2016. So even with COVID and all the uncertainty and all the expenses, we managed to get through COVID, and we managed to get through six years without a general fund tax hike. The only taxes we raised were a couple little one-tenth of a mil tax hikes. That guy in the back, the Public Safety Department benefited from that. You know, the township buys new fire apparatus every few years for our fire departments. The cost of those trucks has gone up exponentially, as Bill well knows. We had one of those increases in order to cover the purchase of fire apparatus, and the second one in order to build out our, our Public Safety Department. So those were the only things that we, that we really had to, to raise taxes for. And of course, that's going to be a challenge in the years ahead. Lower Paxton is the largest municipality in Pennsylvania that is serviced by an all-volunteer fire department, which is a tribute to our fire volunteers, that they're able to do that. There are fewer and fewer of them. I know we, just this past week, announced a program, to provide a stipend program to fill in some areas. That's going to be an ongoing cost for the township that's going to be going up, because we're not going to be able to continue down that path forever. But I can't say enough about our, our Public Safety Department. Our police department is second to none in Pennsylvania. You know, during the Black Lives Matter riots and all the disturbances that happened in 2020 and 2021, very proud of our community. Our community never engaged in that. Not only did they not engage in that, but they rushed out to embrace our police department and our public safety folks. And so, you know, we have a stellar set of volunteer firefighters, we have a stellar police department, and we have a very lengthy report, what is it, 360 pages?
378.
378-page report on where we're going to go in the future, so we're going to leave you with that. And what I think was one of our biggest achievements was when we were able to turn the Friendship Community Center over to the YMCA. And I know Robin and I met very early on with the YMCA whenever they proposed it, and when COVID hit, I thought, well, that's probably, you know, going to be the end of that. Who's going to do this in the midst of COVID? But they were ready to go, and we negotiated with them. We did find out that we were actually spending about $850,000 a year on the Friendship Center, far more than what anybody had thought we were spending. By privatizing it to the YMCA, and it's actually a long-term lease, we still own the building. We did preserve the senior center, which is still owned by the township and operated and will continue to be a senior center. But we were able to turn the operations of the Y, of the Friendship Center over to the Y, which has brought about significant cost savings for us. And if you've been there recently, they're doing one heck of a job.
They, they are thriving. They just put new lanes, dividers in at the pool, and they're going to be putting all new equipment in also. It is very, very busy. It was a, it was a great recommendation for us to do that.
Yeah. So, you know, actually, have the Friendship Center operated by somebody whose business it is to run that sort of a center rather than the township, which freed up money and manpower to go elsewhere, particularly to our Parks Department. Another thing that we've worked on, we had our Parks and Rec Board come to us a number of years ago, and Supervisor Navarro and I met with them, and they informed us that a lot of our parks were in serious need of taking care of some deferred maintenance. Turned out to be millions and millions and millions of dollars of deferred maintenance. But we were able to sell off some excess property to a developer. I'm going to get to that in a minute. And we were able to take that money and some of the COVID relief money and launch the largest Parks Improvement Project in township history. So that is underway. We've done a number of things this year, many more on schedule for the coming construction season. It will go on for several years. I also want to mention the fact that in terms of administering the township, townships all across Pennsylvania have experienced what has been called a silver tsunami, where a lot of longtime top staff were retiring, had hit retirement age. That happened in Lower Paxton Township. Very soon after Chris and I came on the board, like, I think within three or four months, George Wolfe, who had been our longtime township manager, announced he was going to retire. And we thereupon started interviewing for Township Manager. That was a really interesting process that took a lot of twists and turns. We knew we wanted to go with somebody younger, so we took a chance and hired somebody out of kindergarten, who probably is still one of the youngest managers in the state. And I guess that was a chance, but it certainly has worked out well. And we went from there. And one thing I will say about Brad's management style, it's always the hallmark of a good manager, if whenever they have a position to fill, they fill it with somebody who knows more about that particular job than they do themselves. You know, a weak manager won't do that, because they want to make themselves look good. A strong manager hires people who know more about that particular job than themselves. For example, our Assistant Township Manager and Finance Director. And from Sam to everybody else who's been hired over the last few years, that's exactly what Brad has done. I think we brought Adam on before you came on, but, which also was a tremendous hire. I remember when we were trying to decide who was going to be Public Safety Director, the sheriff called me. And if anybody knows the sheriff, you know he likes to talk. And he called me and started talking to me about this guy by the name of Adam Kosheba. And a couple of our Magisterial District Judges had already weighed in on that particular issue, and, you know, it was pretty much decided that, you know, Adam was going to be the guy. But the sheriff kept talking and talking and talking. And I said, you know, you're talking past the sale here. So he's, he's probably the chairman of your fan club, Adam. But it was great that we brought Adam on board, and we have, you know, gone through the silver tsunami and put into place tremendous staff. Now, one of the areas where we had a lot of controversy, and which I know the board will be focused on in coming years, is in the area of development. And there, of course, are Facebook trolls who like to sit there in their fuzzy slippers and make comments all the time, every time development is brought up, and some of that is occurring even as we speak. But one thing I want to say, Lower Paxton now is the largest municipality of Dauphin County, the second-largest municipality in the mid-state. And we've had a lot of development. And there are some people who like to complain about that. And I'm always, I'm always taken aback when people say, well, do we need another pizza shop or another car wash? Maybe we don't need another car wash. But I always say, you know, the reason why you're getting another pizza shop or another car wash is because somebody who owns private property is investing private capital in putting in a private business, and if we don't need it, it's not going to hurt you. They're the ones who are going to lose their money. And when it comes to development, we have people, well, we have enough houses. Usually, people saying that are people who, like, live in a house that somebody had already built. But if you look at development, and, you know, I've, I've read the comments, you know, the supervisors are in the pocket of the developers. Well, if you talk to any of the developers, they will certainly disagree with that, because we do hold their feet to the fire in a lot of ways. But not only do developers make money, but I point out that whenever we do development, whether it be retail development, or housing, or whatever, not only do developers make money, and they should, because they put a lot of capital at risk, and they spend a lot of time getting plans approved, a lot of time, but also carpenters, electricians, plumbers, bricklayers, landscapers, the people who sell appliances, the people who sell carpet, the people who sell furniture, all of them make money when we have development. So my one recommendation to the board going forward is, don't be afraid of that. You know, there's always going to be somebody in a municipality of 53,000 people who are going to complain. And, you know, you're going to listen to them, because I know this board always does. But at the end of the day, there are rules and there are laws, and that development that proceeds according to plans and that is done thoughtfully is a good thing for Lower Paxton. And hopefully, the Colonial Park Mall will be one of those things that, I think some good things might be on the horizon there that you'll be able to see through. So it's been a very busy six years, and I would be remiss to not thank my wife Carol. She's the one who, whenever I came home, had to listen to me vent every Tuesday night about what it was that happened, and also keep dinner warm. So you don't have to do that anymore. With that, any other comments from board members?
I have a couple of comments. First of all, I want to recognize Senator DeSanto and Representative Joe Kerwin, and thank you for serving, Joe. We're going to miss you.
Yes.
We're really going to miss you. Joe's going to be leaving after the holidays to go to East Africa, East Africa, with the Color Guard, so good luck to you.
National Guard.
National Guard.
At the Color Guard.
What did I say? Color Guard. Oh, my God, National Guard. It's okay.
Although, I don't know, were you in the Color Guard in high school?
No, I wasn't.
You were.
National Guard.
He knew what you meant.
He knew what I meant.
He knew what you meant.
Okay, yeah. But we're going to miss you. Loman did say about the stipend program, I just want to let the board know that contacted today by somebody from the western part of state who are interested in our stipend program, and I forwarded it to Mr. Gottschall, and he's already been contacted by somebody from the western part of the state also that is interested in our program. So our program is out there, we've been doing it since November, and it's working. And other municipalities have read up on it, and we're going to be able to share, you know, share with them, so just give you a heads up, Adam. So also, I just wanted to thank everybody that helped with the Kris Kringle Market, Lower Paxton Community Foundation. They're saying between 7,000, 8,000 people were there that day, even though the weather wasn't the best, it was crowded, the vendors did well, and what a great community event. So thank you to the Kris Kringle Mark. Today, Supervisor Zumison and myself, we presented a proclamation from the township to Scott B. Pytiger, who was a 40-year employee of Huffman Ford. And he did his 40 years in Lower Paxton Township for his whole work career, so. And thank you, Representative Kerwin. Norm had, did present the, the citation for you, so. So now the big thing.
Big thing?
The big thing. This is for Chairman Loman Henry. You know, thank you for all you've done for the past six years, leading us in the right direction, and all the things that you had said that we, you know, that we have done with your leaderships here, so we really appreciate it. So how do you want to do this, Brad? Do you want to go down below? Do we want to go up?
Loman, what would you prefer?
I don't know what she's doing, so...
Neither does she, so...
Neither does she.
We have a gift for you from the Board of Supervisors.
Oh, how nice.
From the Township. And then I also have a certificate from PSATs that I'd like to read also.
Oh, okay.
So maybe we, Jack, should we go down front for pictures and stuff? Okay, and then we, I can read it down there, so.
That's good, my desk clock stopped one thing a year ago.
Perfect. Perfect.
The one off the square? It took a lot for us to put that clock in this square.
Yeah, that'd be perfect. So let's, should we want to present this first down here, and then we'll... Okay.
You guys come?
Yeah, probably could. We want to look into that.
Yeah, sure. Yeah.
Yeah, we've got to have the seal.
Supposed to, of course.
This clock is presented to Loman for your dedication to the township, Dauphin County, Board of Supervisors, 1998 to 1999, and Chairman, 2018. Happy Board of Supervisors. Thank you. As an executive board member of the township, this, then I'm presenting this to Loman. This is a service hereby extended to Loman S. Henry in recognition of the county. We commend you for your selfless dedication to the government as well as your passion and passion extended by the Pennsylvania State of the 1920.
You've got Dave Santos.
Yes.
Right. By the big man himself. Thank you very much.
Do you guys want to say anything? What would we do?
Do you want to do a big one?
They have their proclamations as well.
Yeah. Lot of proclamating going on. I'm really worried about the guy sitting next to my wife.
She's her bodyguard.
Loman, I've known you for a long time. Great service. My only concern is that Steve Stein's still here. How long has he been here? Anyway, but on behalf of the Senate and everything that you've done, I won't read the whole proclamation, but, you know, with my personal thanks for your service, well, with the recognition from the Senate, I just want to present that to you.
Thank you.
Wish you well in your, I know, not retirement.
I know, much more to do.
All right. Congratulations.
Thank you.
I got to run.
I appreciate it.
Senator, please. Yeah. Let me just do a roof shout. So Representative, do you want to get next to, like, on this side of the middle piece there?
Sorry.
They want me right here. Just fall right.
I do whatever Jack says.
Why don't you hold the clock? Yeah, yeah. So that's great. Thank you.
Thanks, guys. I appreciate it. Congratulations.
Nice to see you.
Thank you, Senator.
Yeah, I disappeared. So I'm up next, Loman, Chairman Henry. I also have a proclamation from the House of Representatives. Thank you for all your help that you give to me since taking the role of 125th coming down into Lower Paxton Township. I have to say, it was quite daunting after the redistricting to realize that I was now going to be representing Lower Paxton Township to a bigger municipality. I didn't know what to expect, but Loman helped me out a lot, always invited me to different events, got me around the township, got me to meet folks. Going to miss you in that capacity, but I know that you're still going to be around and still helpful. And you are an example of leadership for this township, and this township is an example for the county, but the state, and that's because of your leadership. So on behalf of the House of Representatives, thank you. Thank you. I'm glad I'm here for it, too.
I hope you have me back.
I know. Thank you.
She told me, she said Robin called once me here. I said, well, no, she didn't tell me what was going to happen. She just said that you wanted her here.
Oh, okay, yes.
I'm like, that Robin? Good job, Loman. Good job. Thank you.
Loman, I'm just going to sit this way. Has the bathroom.
Okay. I still have the gavel, Robin, so keep it short.
So again, we just want to thank Loman for all he's done for us for the past six years and what he's done for the township. So would the board members like to say anything?
I'd like to say something. As the newest board member, you know, coming into this group and having never been in politics before or doing, doing anything like this, you know, when I first met with Loman, I came home and I told my wife, you know, how amazing this guy was and, you know, and that I really wanted to take advantage of this opportunity truly to learn from him. And it's a sad day for me because, because truly, I couldn't imagine, you know, being in this position without you, you know, or learning half of the things that I've learned from you. And, you know, I, you know, I'm glad you're still around and we can, I think we could call you and I hope you'll answer the phone, but, but no, truly, you know, I don't know if I would have done this if you weren't, you know, the chairman of this board and if I didn't, couldn't learn from, from you. And I mean that, you know, meeting you and, you know, your passion and your knowledge for these positions and it really, you know, you've helped guide me and I appreciate and, you know, I'm very sorry to not have you here.
Well, thank you, Paul.
Well, I'm going to tell you what I'm not going to miss. I'm not going to miss that gavel that goes into my left ear. Not at that, not like that. Five times that hard.
Wait till the last one.
Yeah. Trying to, trying to make sure that Loman keeps a straight face as he's sitting across from me in the executive sessions is, it's been a daunting task, I might say. But, yeah, I'll miss you as well. And you know that. I've talked to you about this before and certainly miss you.
Well, one thing we know is the chairman prides himself on a brisk meeting agenda and he likes to keep things moving. So I will just say, and we all know it, character reveals itself. If you serve with people long enough in any capacity, you can't fake it. So I think we work together, good times and bad. Fun and not so fun, and when the heat is on and when you can lose your cool and start pointing fingers and, I'm a firm believer, character reveals itself, and your character did reveal itself.
Right.
And there's no substitute for that. And it's been an honor working with you.
Same here. It's great being a running mate, too.
That's right.
Well, let me say this. We all are involved in a lot more than this. So while we may not be back together here, we certainly have many other areas where we all work together in other forums, so it's certainly not goodbye. We've got a lot more to do. And if I can borrow Norm saying, I'm not going to miss the circus, but I will miss the clowns. So thank you all. I really appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
I really do. And with that, are there any other board member comments about anything else? Well, thank you. Thank you. It's very much appreciated. Managers' report.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, I can't let you go that easy. I have to give my piece, of course.
Oh, boy.
And I, you know, I was hoping at least I'd get maybe like first grade or something because I, you know, this, I thought this facial hair was doing something for me, but anyway.
Advanced kindergartner.
Thank you. But anyway, sir, you know, as you know, this board knows, I've, you know, traveled the state managing communities, small to large and boroughs to townships now. And, you know, I've interacted with many local political individuals and local elected officials and a lot of different chairpersons throughout that time. And I'll just quickly echo what everyone has said, that I will certainly miss you. You have certainly been the most effective chairperson that I've seen from across the state, and I mean that. I've, you know, seen a lot of different iterations of various boards and a lot of, you know, from, you know, five-person board to a 12-person board. And you have managed to effectively do what a lot of people struggle to do, which is corral a group of elected officials to get to a very, you know, effective and quick resolution on things and keep this thing going. Have you, as you have cited, we've been very busy and it's only been able to come together because of a very strong leader that we have in you, sir. And we'll certainly miss that. And I've only ever known you as a, as a chairperson, so, but beyond that, you've been a completely dedicated public servant from the time, as I understand, that you were my own age, running for office and doing things from a very early age. So it's very clear that you've been a public servant from birth. And as one of those people, I, myself, I certainly appreciate that and, and am not going to, I'm going to look upon our time together very, very favorably. So I appreciate your time, sir.
Thank you, Brad. And I have to say, when you came along, I thought, I know, I know his type. And I was right. Do you have any other?
That is all, sir. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Okay, with that, old business of which I see none. So Mr. Gottschall has managed to load up the agenda with a lot of things, including something really, really significant that I believe Mr. Miller has put a few hours into this year, i.e. the budget. So we do need to take action to adopt Resolution 2023-33, adopting the rate of taxation and the 2024 township budget. Mr. Miller?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We'll keep this pretty simple. There have been no changes to the budget since our public presentation and the advertising portion, so as it was presented last month, it remains in that same capacity now. So the action before you would to adopt the rate of taxation, which is unchanged from the prior year, and as mentioned, in general fund mileage since 2016, as well as the 2024 township budgets for our operating funds, the general, the solid waste and recycling, state aid, liquid fuels, our general improvement fund, as well as the fire tax and equipment fund.
Board members, I believe we've had many meetings and spent many hours on this budget, but does anybody have any remaining questions? Seeing none, would somebody like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 2023-33?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
So moved, is there a second? Second. Moved and seconded, all in favor? Aye. And Mr. Miller and Mr. Gottschall, congratulations on steering us through the budget process and once again keeping that tax rate the same. Good job. Under new business, we need to take action to adopt Resolution 2023-32, amending certain fees and charges for municipal services during the 2024 fiscal year. And again, Mr. Miller?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Two years ago, we worked on consolidating our fees to a centralized schedule so it could enable us to easier update that every year and manage those costs. So for this year, only a few minor changes have been made. We have added, at the recommendation of our public works director, a non-resident fee for the compost facility for individuals that want to take part there, not much more than the resident fee, so again, very fair still. We had some slight adjustments of indexing for the parks area for some of the rentals of the parks and facilities. And then finally, we introduced the information in relation to the contracted rate for the solid waste and recycling contract. Apart from that, the rates remain unchanged from the previous year for action.
Board members, questions or comments? Hearing none, is there a motion to adopt Resolution 2023-32?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve action to adopt Resolution 2023-32, amending certain fees and charges for municipal services during the 2024 fiscal year, as presented by Mr. Miller.
So moved, is there a second? Second. Moved and seconded, all in favor? Aye. We need to take action on application for payment number seven and contract closeout, closeout, yay, for the East Coast Contracting for the Reception Area Renovations and Safety Upgrades Project. Mr. Gottschall, finally, at long last.
I don't believe it.
You don't believe it?
Yes, sir, finally, yes. This is one conclusion that I know, I know you'd be proud of here. So with that said, sir, this is the contract closeout and also application for payment in the amount of $12,000 to East Coast Contracting Incorporated. With all that said, the project is long last complete.
I don't believe it.
Any questions?
Yeah, I have a question.
Yes.
Are we going to change the fact that we need security keys to get in the bathroom? Wasn't that part of the project that, that they did so that we don't need our fobs to, to enter to the bathrooms? Because I think that's a, particularly for the public, they don't have fobs, so how are they going to enter the bathrooms?
So, sir, actually, that, the part of the project was, was including that. It was, it was not fobbed before. However, what, what this project attempted to do was provide security to the building to really create a, we'll call it a security bubble. And essentially now, the public's interaction with this building now only is inclusive of that, you know, that reception lobby. And, and so we have a number of security improvements which really secure that area and lock that area down, if I could use that phrase. And so with regard to the bathroom facilities particularly, during our meetings, the, the security system allows for two sets of restrooms to be accessible free of fob use, which would be the, the restrooms outside this left hallway here from our perspective. And then also the restrooms off the lobby are now available, you know, during our public meetings. So, so we do have restrooms available, but just, you know, during the day when business is occurring, you know, all interaction with the public is occurring within this new security bubble. And so members of the public do have to, you know, approach the reception to, to get beyond that, but.
Remember your fob. You can get locked out of the bathroom. Okay, that aside, any other questions? We have motion to accept application for payment number seven for East Coast Contracting.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we accept application for payment number seven, contract closeout from East Coast Contracting, Inc. for the Reception Area Renovations and Safety Upgrades Project in the amount of $12,000.
So moved, is there a second? Second. Moved and seconded, all in favor? Aye. We need to take action to approve application for payment number three from SLC Excavating LLC for the Forest Hills Park Improvements.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, SLC Excavating LLC continues to work on the Forest Hills project. We are anticipating completion of this project rather shortly. They're working now on a few punchless items, and so that project will be wrapping up very shortly. This application is in the amount of $57,016.13, and again, to SLC Excavating LLC.
Any questions?
Yeah, I just had one question, Brad, and maybe I've missed it before. I never saw with these contracts like this that they put the laborer's name, where he's from, and then how many hours he worked. You know, I never saw that in our packet before. Is that something new? Yeah, keep going.
This project, like Forest Hills, is nearing completion sometime, hopefully soon. This project, as the board is intimately aware, was quite a bit larger than Forest Hills and is really going to provide just amazing parks infrastructure to that, to that portion of the township. So hopefully, it'll be done very shortly.
And that park's really used heavily, so.
Oh, yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Any questions? Is there a motion to approve the application for payment number four from Rogel, Inc.?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. That takes us to subdivision and land development. And, well, after my speech about development, we have no subdivision or land development plans, but we do have improvement guarantees, of which there are three. Is there a motion to approve the improvement guarantees?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion. We, we approve the improvement guarantees, 6450 Devonshire Heights Road, 6458 McCormick Lane, Willshire Phase 2A.
So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
This takes us to payment of bills for Lower Paxton Township and the Lower Paxton Township Authority. Mr. Treasurer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I make a motion that we approve payment of bills for Lower Paxton Township and the Lower Paxton Township Authority.
So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
We need to take action to approve application for payment number four from New Enterprise Stone and Lime for the 2023 paving project.
Yes, sir. This application for payment is in the amount of $154,493.56. And again, that being to contractor, New Enterprise Stone and Lime Company. And I'd be happy to help answer any questions that you may have on this.
Questions? Okay. Is there a motion to approve application for payment number four from New Enterprise Stone and Lime?
So moved.
So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we need to take action to approve application for payment number four from Rogel, Inc. for the Brightbill Park Playground Improvement Project. Mr. Gottschall, you're getting a lot of work tonight.
Yes, sir. This application for payment number four is in the amount of $136,876.05. And again, that being to the contractor, Rogel Incorporated. This project, like Forest Hills, is nearing completion sometime, hopefully soon. This project, as the board is intimately aware, was quite a bit larger than Forest Hills and is really going to provide just amazing parks infrastructure to that, to that portion of the township. So hopefully, it'll be done very shortly.
And that park's really used heavily, so.
Oh, yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Any questions? Is there a motion to approve the application for payment number four from Rogel, Inc.?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
That takes us to subdivision and land development. And, well, after my speech about development, we have no subdivision or land development plans, but we do have improvement guarantees, of which there are three. Is there a motion to approve the improvement guarantees?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion. We, we approve the improvement guarantees, 6450 Devonshire Heights Road, 6458 McCormick Lane, Willshire Phase 2A.
So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
This takes us to payment of bills for Lower Paxton Township and the Lower Paxton Township Authority. Mr. Treasurer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I make a motion that we approve payment of bills for Lower Paxton Township and the Lower Paxton Township Authority.
So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Are there any further announcements this evening?
Mr. Chairman, just wanted to give a quick update to folks. For the next two weeks, we have holidays on Monday. So just a reminder, there'll be no solid waste or recycling collection on Monday. It's going to shift a day for everyone. So if Monday's your collection day, you're moving to Tuesday. And ultimately, down to Friday, we'll be picked up on Saturday.